All right, it's 5:30. I'd like to call tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, to order here in the wardrobe. Do we have a roll call, please, standing?
Andrew DeRizzo.
Here.
Jaclyn Gramler.
Here.
Mike Hornisher.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Paul Prue.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Nub Staschbeck.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here.
Please rise, should be able to face the light with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just so to say.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Maps respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event, professional conduct, and expectation for all defendants.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda would be public comments to the board. I do not have any sheets turned in, do you, Tammy, Shannon? Next on our agenda, in lieu of formal recognition by the board tonight, I think it would be appropriate for us to take a moment to thank Dr. Kelly Strike. This is our last meeting with our Director of Business Services. Thank you for all you've done to guide the district and the board and everything you've done in your time here. Just really appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Shannon?
So, Dr. Strike has been here for two years and has been very helpful to us as a board and to myself personally. So, I thank you personally for the help that you've given me and made sure you were able to share with me balanced budgets, got us off a fiscal cliff, helped build a Fund 46, built a fund balance, reduced short-term borrowing. Everything we could ask she has done. We appreciate all the work you've done and we are in a much better place since you were here.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. Best wishes.
Thank you, Kelly. I am not on finance HR for good reason, but I always attend that meeting because I think I need to be there. And just as somebody where that's not my wheelhouse, I really appreciated how you explained things and like even a lot of the visuals you put up were really helpful to someone like me who is more of a, you know, finance and HR is not my thing. So, I appreciated it for you delivering the information and were really explanatory and thorough.
Thank you.
It feels like we should clap. That's pretty hard to follow, but like I said, going through that, why don't we cover all the administrative reports? Normally, we contacted you or the administrators before now if we did have questions. But why don't you go through them and see where we stand on all this month's administrative reports?
Thank you. First item is the Director of Curriculum Destruction Report. Those of you that spring out that were shared at the CTP meeting the other day, we'll have some updates on the recent together. Amanda Patterson is here with us if anybody has any questions regarding that. Next is the School Force Final Report for the 2324 school year prepared by Russ Nolan. Shows our usage of the school force. The calendar shows who is there and how many students. That's the report that's linked. And then a survey that's sent to U of M Stevens Point, who kind of keeps a database of all school force in the state. So, that survey is submitted in by Russ. Are there any questions or comments on that? Next up is the English Language Learners Report for the 2324 school year. Attaches a report from Ryan Martini, who we had a better opportunity. I think he's fishing in Canada, is that where he is, Canada? So, but if you have questions, I can forward that out. It shows our Eola members historically. Next is Item B, Director of People's Services Special Ed Report. Amber Luska is here playing. Her report focuses on the Community Homeless Assistance Act. And she's here playing questions that were shared at CTP as well. Food Service Participation Report for May is attached. That was prepared by Laura Crowsey. If there are any questions, I would just forward that out to her. Next up is the Director of Business Services Report, Resignation Contracts, Year-End Data, and the Director of Business Services Report. Kelly is obviously here tonight, so if there are any questions regarding her work. Hearing none, the Director of Building and Grounds Transportation Update. Includes information on Jefferson School, some summer maintenance projects, et cetera, et cetera. Nick is here this evening. If we have questions for Nick, I have a feeling he'll be presenting shortly. And then finally is my Superintendent's Report. There's some information about the Jefferson Elementary property update. We continue to meet with prospective parties that are interested in purchasing that property. And it's taken them throughout some tours. We have another one coming up here shortly. As that unfolds, we hope to have some more usable information for you in July. Also, as an update on the PFOs solutions out at Pine River. We have engaged with Donahue, which is a water engineering service that helped clean up the Wassa PFOs issue. And so, they're helping us, we help distribution granting with the DNR. A number of us just got back from the Sale Academy. We were there for three days. And that's an organizational improvement program that we've been involved in for the last two years. And I just gotta say, we had three very, very productive days. I'll share that out with you in July in greater depth. And I'll share with you our 100-day plans coming up for next school year. But very, very proud of our team. They were, it was very collaborative, very productive. It was heavy lifting for three days and we all had worked on it. And I just really like what we're having, the team, and we're getting some of the solid community students folks to go out. Committee of Education, we'll make a presentation on that in July. And then we're in the thick of hiring season and things are going pretty good as far as hiring is concerned. We're very pleased where we're at. And so, we're on track to be in a good spot. But you know, you always have people coming in in July and those kinds of things. As of today, we're getting there. Any questions on any of those reports? Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on the agenda is committee reports. We'll start with the Finance Human Resources Committee. The draft minutes were attached from our June 12th committee meeting. John Smith is the new Chair for Finance HR and other members of Finance Human Resources Committee are available for questions. Do any board members have questions for the Finance HR Committee? Any questions for Finance HR? As we move down to the CTP, Curriculum, Technology, People's Services. The draft minutes were attached from that June 12th committee meeting. Ron Liberty is our new Chair for CTP. Ron and other members of the CTP Committee are available for questions. Do any board members have questions for our CTP Committee members? Any questions for our CTP Committee members? Just want to thank everybody. There's been a lot of work done. I know it doesn't always seem that way here. Get appreciated, but there was a lot of topics on these too and it's a past committee meeting. So, thanks for everyone for coming prepared and adding your perspective on things so we can keep things moving along in the district. So, thanks to everyone for that. Next on our agenda is unfinished business. We do not have anything categorized as that at this time. Under Board of Education Business, we'll start this evening with the AGR Achievement Gap Reduction Objectives, or the Topic Summary Sheet co-authored by Amanda Patterson, Heather Silberg, Megan Kautser. And there is a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. If anyone is willing to make a motion on this topic tonight. Ron?
Make a motion to approve the AGR end of year report.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Any questions, discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is amended CISA 9 contract, specifically instructional coach services with an attached topic summary sheet from Amanda Patterson. This has been reviewed by CTP and Finance Human Resources Committee, bringing a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? John?
I motion to approve the amended CISA 9 contract to include instructional coach services.
Motion by John. Do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any question or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Fiscal Year 25 Preliminary Budget Approval. We have the Topic Summary Sheet provided by Dr. Kelly Strike. A recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic tonight? Ron?
Motion to approve the Fiscal Year 25 Preliminary Budget as presented.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? There's a lot of moving parts in that yet, being this time of year. So, we appreciate the work on having everything together on the preliminary budget. Hearing no questions or discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Workers' Compensation Policy. That topic summary was provided by Dr. Strike, reviewed by Finance Human Resources with a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Nubs?
I recommend approval of the Workers' Compensation Policy with RES as presented.
Motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Jaclyn, go ahead.
I can't remember. Is it that's what is just called RES or is that stand for, you know, maybe there's some periods, but I just, I don't.
I don't remember. And I know I've seen it and I can't remember off the top of my head, but I can try to look it up. I think it's called RES.
It's just RES.
Any additional follow-up questions on that, Jaclyn?
No, thank you.
Other discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Annual Review of Contracts for Services Over $10,000 for the Fiscal Year 2025. Topic Summary Sheet was provided by Dr. Strike, reviewed by the Finance HR Committee with a recommended motion. Do we have, anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? John?
I motion to approve the continuation of contracts for vendors and purchases as presented for the 2024-25 Fiscal Year with cost variances not to exceed or lower of 5% or $10,000.
Motion by John. Do we have a second? Second? Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Deaf and Hard of Hearing Contracted Services. Topic Summary Sheet from Amber Luska. This has been reviewed by both the CTP and Finance Human Resources Committees, and there is a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
I recommend a motion to approve the contracted services provider Kathy Pope-Angstrom, Educational Consulting for Deaf and Hard Hearing Students LLC, beginning the 2425 school year paid through special education at full full pay.
Motion by Jaclyn. Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions in regards to this topic or the motion? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Merrill High School PLA Resource Adoption. We have provided a topic summary sheet from Amanda Patterson. This has been reviewed by both CTP and the Finance Human Resources Committee with a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
I recommend a motion to approve the purchases of us. My perspectives for English 9, English 10, English 11, and English 12 is the universal PLA resource for the next six school years in the amount of $134,119.50 to be paid from SRF funds.
Motion by Jaclyn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron. Any questions or discussion in regards to this motion or topic? Questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the Approval of the Updated Activities Code of Conduct for 2024-2025. Topic Summary Sheet was provided by Activities Director Christopher Hahn. And this has been reviewed by our CTP Committee, and there is a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Amber?
I motion to approve the updated version of the Activities Code of Conduct for the 2024-2025 school year.
Motion by Amber. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Replacing the Main Breaker at Merrill High School. Topic Summary Sheet is provided by Nick Wazalik. There is a recommended motion from administration. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? John?
Motion to purchase a replacement main breaker from Merrill High School, Schneider Electric, or one of their distributors not to exceed $88,235 per the bid provided.
Motion by John. Do we have a second? Second by Ron. Before asking for questions, I guess I'll just turn it right over to Shannon, kind of as they come up right away to the room, because it's been a long few days since Sunday for that kind of stuff. But kind of cover the whole situation.
Sounds good. So, I'll just kind of start the discussion here a little bit. So, I've been going on to, let's say, Kelly and Nick, as you kind of mentioned, this has been happening, it's like since Monday morning. So, Monday morning when the crew arrived, we had no power lines. And so, Nick did some troubleshooting, stayed in contact with us. Kind of let him tell what he thought was troubleshooting and how it got to this. But it's kind of a, it's kind of an interesting story on several levels, including like potentially a policy gap. There is a lot of things that, the only thing that could have been worse is if it was in January and school was in session.
Right.
And for the event, we covered all the checkboxes for bad things that could happen. And so, I'll let, I'll take it from there. So, the main breaker we have at the school is the, I've learned is the largest breaker that you can completely, the single breaker in a building in St. Louis, Scotts. Three thousand and a breaker. We tried to narrow down. We thought it may have been a transformer on the north side of the building that controlled a lot of the lighting and narrowing it down to the mains and things. Keep in mind, during that period, the temperature was rapidly rising. As we started to shut certain areas of the school down, nothing was real consistent. Everything would always come back to the main breaker. None of the other supplemental breakers could actually go off. I guess we thought that might have been a transformer on that side. We eliminated that. We really keep lights and most power on the south side of the building. When we tried to power up the air conditioning on the north side, we would run for roughly 15 minutes. As the day went on, kept moving things back and forth. By the end of the day, they wouldn't have any, the second should flip that switch. We had Vannard come up from Wassa to do some troubleshooting. They checked to see that the lines, we knew that we had, but obviously a lot of water in the last couple of months. Thought there might have been a fault in the line. They eliminated that. I got on the phone with Square D. They had a guy kind of talk us through the things to look for. In that process, he thought the best solution would be to have one of their electricians. If they were fortunate to give it off, they keep seven electricians in-house. This is their expertise. They were able to free up a guy today to come up and take a look at it. And that's where we were able to find the temporary refurbished breaker. This breaker that we have was discontinued roughly 23 years ago. We couldn't even get a smaller piece apart to get you reading on that breaker. They brought up a refurbished one. That's, we have a place now where the building is, up and running, it's fine. The problem itself was inside the breaker, a ton of electrician that they, they did their best to try and explain it, but it was, it was centralized to the breaker itself. Everything else outside of that main breaker is in good shape. The line, the conduit coming into the building, which is not very normal, is completely full of water. That, like I said, that's something out of the ordinary. But four or five hours of work today with working with their electrician, they really hit the wood and help the building back up. In order to modernize what we have here, it's about a 35 to 50 week custom build. These are things that just like on shelves while the electricians here had things apart and took pages and pages and pages of measurements to make sure that they can get something that they can custom build in Ohio to tour and place to kind of business. That breaker is, I figure it's 26, 26 years, 27 years old. In my opinion, I don't, I'm obviously being proactive is cheaper than being reactive, but in that 26 years, I don't know that that'd be something that I personally would look to replace in that amount of time. So, let's, you know, just kind of wrapping up if there's any other questions.
Is that the only breaker that size in the building?
Yeah.
That's like the main.
It is the main. It's the first line that comes in. It goes, everything goes through that main breaker.
John, then Ron.
Do we own the temporary one now?
No, that's the one. We, we kept the one that is bad, which isn't going to have anybody any good. There may be somebody that would purchase it to hopes that they could refurbish it and, you know, sell it. But they didn't, they, Square D didn't even, didn't want it anywhere.
Ron?
Is that 440 coming in for the transformer or that service just happened to the building?
Yeah, there's, I've learned a lot through this process of how the building is wired. Everything comes into that central location and then immediately a lot of the power is shot across the, you know, the building, open area that goes directly to the north side of the building. That's what powers the chiller, there's a lot of the lighting. There's, there's a lot more on the north end that takes power than does in the south.
Would we be better off breaking part of that off and coming with a new feed off a different transformer to a smaller, smaller?
I think that would probably be something to maybe look at and talk with the EPS on. I don't know, I'm not real sure how, what they're willing to do. Being that we can't get by with one single breaker, I don't know that they would have any interest in running two services. If that's what you're asking, running two services to one building. Like I've got the feeling that they wouldn't have much interest in that, you know, because it's on the common for hospitals and things of that nature. But for a school, I'm not, I don't know that they would, but that is definitely a question worth asking.
Because then you get by with a smaller breaker to start with.
And then obviously, this, you know, this building has been kind of pieced together through the years. One thing I would be interested in knowing is how close we are to capacity for that breaker.
That's what I'm thinking. You break that off into two sections, your capacity drops on each one.
We've got a 500-ton chiller up there that they're looking to possibly upsize. That's going to be a lot more.
I think I would, I would talk, I, I'm sorry, I would recommend that we talk to them and see about breaking that down into two, which you cut down the price probably as for this big breaker. And get it done into two smaller ones.
There would be a lot of initial.
Now you've got passive going down, you're still with the other. Sorry, that makes sense to you or?
I'm not, yeah. You just educated me on everything I know about a split breaker. But yeah, it makes sense.
I agree, it should be like that.
That would ask us?
It's definitely that conversation.
Couple of questions that have been asked me. We ran a lot of, if in this career, we could all attack our food service, food, all of our cool letters. We did have some spoilage in like offices and those kind of things and so on. Our generator is not equipped to run our building. It's equipped to run IT, emergency lights, those kind of things. It's a generator, we're in the fast through. What kind of thing called else? And you really don't want to just sit on the generator for an extended time. One of the challenges that we had was a couple of things. It was kind of like regular sass, what it was. And so, there was some kind of significant parts in there. But the timing of this, we were lucky to have this guy come today. The next one was about 10 days out. I figured which would have been kind of a challenge for us. But Kelly and I were talking about, it's common in purchasing policy to be able to make emergency purchases. And I said, Kelly, I don't see that in our policy, you know, because we have had that discussion. It's not in there. Well, in looking at our Niola policy, it's been modified two or three times. And it's, it's very far off from, it's no, I would argue, it's probably, Niola would argue it's not a Niola policy. The Niola policy, I'll just read losses, it's the same policy. Losses has this sentence. The District Committee of Teachers authorize to make emergency purchases without prior approval to those goods and services needed to make to keep the schools in operation. Such purchases shouldn't draw to the board's attention for the next year. That might be a discussion we might have sometime. However, that goes. That is, you see from our policy, it was common in a lot of places. So, I think we're so. We have their blank template. We have, yeah.
One more, the elevators, same thing. The elevators went down. We had to do something. Martin wasn't going to meet for whatever president or superintendent made the decision to go ahead and. So, there's another example of we didn't follow policy, but you had to do what you had to do. Thank you guys for going ahead and to get, get it as close as you can and to keep going.
So, there's a clarification. We're going to run on this loaner for up to 30 weeks.
Up to 50. Up until we, up until our, our bill.
Is that new breaker link, assuming it has some level of warranty?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And it, of course, will be current.
Serviceable.
Unfortunately, when this breaker was purchased, I think that was the last year. And there, there's some literature in here on the, what they, they discontinue those paths, we, we ride the tail end. So yeah. Limbo Field has over forty of them. They are slowly trying to phase theirs out with, so there might be a few spares out there when they're done. And I did, I did ask if they'd be willing to borrow a spare, but they pulled out of like old.
I'm not an electrician, first and foremost, but just thinking about this listening, if we're going to look into splitting off, creating a second breaker, what does that do to our project? Does that add time to it? Can it be done the same time span? And do we have to order that breaker now before we make that decision?
Yeah. Yes.
So kind of a moot point then. You're not going to be able to say, well, we don't want to order it. If we find out what we can do. What about it do to the order, you think, just?
Well, I'm not going to say that we would be able to get anything any quicker, because I think a lot of this stuff is, you can't even go to Menards right now and buy a, you know, a box for your house unless you're getting real lucky. I mean, everything is so far behind still since COVID that it's, it's, it's so hard to get anything. And I don't know, we're talking something like this, it's, everything takes a long, long time.
Yeah, I think the concept is great. I think that's, that's a good idea to split it and add, but at the same time, then, you know, what does it do to our time schedule?
Yeah, I, I think maybe if we were to look at something like that, we may want to look at the larger picture. That, I mean, like, so there are transformers in there. They don't last forever, and that's not a cheap fix, you know?
That's exactly what I was thinking. Public service might want to change their transformers also.
No, our, our transformers. We have a five-hundred KDA on that, on the north side of the building. We have a three-hundred on this side of it. I mean, we've got, we've got expensive.
Where are the two coming off of public services transformer?
Correct. But we have, we have a transformer on the north side that, that operates our lighting on that side. And that, that is, it's massive, and it's extremely expensive to replace. And they, and they do fit, more, more common than we.
One more quick question. What is it that went out? Is that a disconnect or is it a circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker.
It's a circuit breaker?
Yeah.
Okay. There's no disconnect there?
There, there are. I guess.
In other words, how did you work on it? Did they, did they service?
They disconnected their service to the building, which is ten feet on the other side of the wall.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So Nick, this business of the split breaker, if that's where the explorer would take, public service would be on board? You said there'd be some upfront costs to us?
It would take some engineering, it would take some rewiring.
Would, now, we're kind of committed to Snyder's breaker. That's why we have this discussion. Would Snyder, Schneider work with us on a split breaker?
I would, I would hope so.
So it might be worth an explore.
Yeah.
Move fast.
And maybe, maybe I missed it in here, but there was not a specific issue where it could be an insurance claim that something happened?
I'm going, I'm going to look into that, I think is a dead end rule, but I, I will look into that.
We've got enough lighting flashing around.
Yeah, I just, I think the age of the, of the breaker itself is going to, I'm thinking we can get it repaired. It's working.
Any other questions or discussions?
One more follow-up question.
Redbone.
No, I'm quiet. The transformers you're talking about, life, the transporter, transformers, is it the same as that breaker? Have they been there that long?
Yeah. Yes, the best of my knowledge.
You know, ballpark figure for a transformer?
The, the research, they said forty years, but they said that about the breaker.
Yeah.
You, you just never, you never do know.
What's the price, the ballpark price?
Sixty.
Sixty thousand?
For the, for the larger one.
And we have two that we have to replace potentially.
Potentially. But the scary thing is the, the larger one, when we first fired it up, it was, it was loud. I don't know that it's normally loud. It's, it's vague, it handles a lot. It kind of caught the electrician ear a little bit, but it's working now.
Did you just cross your fingers?
I did.
Creation.
Any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Just to add that follow-up information, provide that our current policy, Wausau's policy, we all have template.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks. You showed your help on that.
Yep.
And Kelly.
Next on our agenda, our Administrator and Professional Staff Compensation Plan. Topic summary sheet was co-authored by Dr. Strike and Shannon Murray. There is a recommended motion. If anyone's willing to make a motion on this topic, agenda item. Jaclyn? John? Everyone? John?
A motion to revise the Administrator and Professional Staff Compensation Plan to include the Director of Human Resource position for the 2024, 2025, as presented.
Motion by John. Do we have a second? Jaclyn? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Anything you'd like to highlight on the.
Yeah, I appreciate that. In April, we approved the new, the new add-in compensation plan that did not have the HR Director column in there, because at that time we did not have, had that discussion with approving that position. When we brought that position to HR Finance and then to the Board, we shared this graphic with adding that column back in. That column was, was the column taken from the documents prior to that position being merged with Finance. So what Dr. Strike did is put that column back in, add two percent to the top, sells twelve thirty to the net, five hundred dollars to each. So that was shared with HR Finance, but we never brought it forward for official approval. So that's.
Update, any follow-up questions or discussion on their motion or this agenda item? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Silver M Club donations for the Merrill Football Program. Donation forms and information were provided by our Activities Director, Chris Han. Due to the fact that donation is over the twenty-five-hundred-dollar limit set policy seventy-two-thirty, the donation comes to the Board separately for approval. There is a recommended motion. If anyone's willing to make a motion on this agenda item or topic this evening? Ron?
A motion to approve donation of the practice jerseys for the grades nine to twelve football program in the amount of two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, forty-four cents. The zone blocking chute for the middle school football program in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, both from the Merrill Silver M Club and Thackey and Merrill Silver.
Motion by Ron, second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Before we get to the consent agenda, I would like to ask the Board members if anyone would like anything, both individually handled for our consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion for our consent agenda this evening? Ron?
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through D, which include minutes of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meetings, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling three million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and sixty cents. Donation is totaling one thousand, two hundred and five dollars, and the attached personnel report, contingent upon release of contract for bearings, and upon satisfaction of the appropriate liquid damage for regular reservations, if applicable.
A motion. Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Brett?
Hope stay from the May fifteenth, four minutes.
Any additional abstentions? John?
Hope stay from the May fifteenth, four minutes.
All right. Any additional abstentions? Jaclyn?
I will abstain from the May twenty-second minutes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries with no abstentions. Go ahead.
Can I just recognize Heather Silver, who's here today as our new Director, Human Resources Director. We're excited to have her on board in that role. I'm happy that she can use the district to help bring on the new homager principal, Kate Goodrich, and so to.
Isn't she having a good speech?
Yeah.
No, wait five minutes. I was going to say, you thought Ron was joking? Oh, that's right. You was joking. All right. Next on our agenda is items for future meetings. This is an opportunity for Board members to mention anything that they feel or remind our group of we're going to bring something to the full Board. Otherwise, if you feel it should go through a specific committee, we can also have that discussion and talk to the Chair of those committees, or Shannon, or myself. If anyone has anything to mention, we already have talked about following up on a couple of the items, and I wouldn't say they're just unfinished, but we're following along on Jefferson progress as well as Evas out at Crizzle. I'm sure there are many other things that we're working on, but those are two that have been noted. Any additional Board member items or topics they want to make sure that are being looked into, if you haven't heard about them already? Mike?
I have a question in regards to that twenty-five-hundred-dollar limit. I've seen that now several meetings in a row. Why haven't you looked at raising it up? Because I've seen several of the meetings I've been to in the past, it was still that same limit.
The donation limit?
Yeah.
And I guess you can speak to it if you want. I think we're trying to get, when you get to that amount of money, we're trying to recognize more people than instead of just a consent agenda. That was kind of the magic number that Policy Committee came up with, that through, you know, those recommendations and past practice, but.
I think that's exactly, I think it's about all of recognition, just honoring that meeting. Just didn't know I had a question.
Yeah, we have talked about some of the other thresholds in regards to the financial. There's been some recognition of making sure that that number is, is corrected in regards to the purchases and some of the procedures that way, but we haven't recently talked about the donation portion.
Thank you.
Any additional items for future meetings? Hearing none. Just a reminder that tomorrow morning, Shannon and I will be on the Blue Jay Radio talking about the highlights from tonight's Board Meeting. That's approximately eight fifteen AM. Future meetings, there is a Safety Committee meeting on Monday, June twenty-four, twelve thirty PM in the Boardroom. Community Education Advisory Committee meeting will next be held on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two PM in the Boardroom. More information to follow is stated earlier, July meetings. CTP or Curriculum, Curriculum Technology, Pupil Services next meets on Wednesday, July tenth, four thirty PM in the Boardroom. Following that, no sooner than five PM, will be Finance Human Resources Committee on that same date, as I said, July tenth, in the Boardroom. Our next regularly scheduled Board Meeting will be Wednesday, July seventeenth, a meeting at five thirty PM here in the Boardroom. Next on our agenda, we have a contemplative motion to adjourn to executive close session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight-five for M one for NF. Considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data, specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personal problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where written B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in any such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations in one eighteen point one-two-five to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that have discussed in public, likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the person discussed. Purpose of the close session would be to review pre-expulsion history chart. Anyone willing to make that motion this evening? John, do we have a second? Second by Mike. Do we have a roll call on that, please, Tammy?
Amber DeRizzo. Jaclyn Gremler.
Aye.
Mike Carnisher.
Aye.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Paul Crew.
Aye.
John Smith.
Aye.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Nuts Ashburn.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye. We will recess, briefly to reset and secure the room for a close session. Thanks to everyone for your attendance.